Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P. M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that our current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the vision and mission statement.
Thank you, President Holman. You can follow along on the agenda. The OPS vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the OPS mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Tielan.
Here.
Nine present.
Moving on to school spotlight, Mr. Maskel. Good evening.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight recognizes teams from Mars Middle and Northwest High for winning the two thousand twenty-two African-American History Competition.
For African-American History Challenge, we have to study a lot, and they've worked on their own many days, many days after school, many days in the evening, to really learn the information and be prepared.
It takes a lot of dedication, people who really want to win.
There's probably a thousand questions that they need to know and study, and so they study that throughout the year, and then we compete at the state level.
Our goal was to win and to do our best, and that's what we did.
We've been best friends since kindergarten. We played basketball together for like three years now, I think, so we've always been really close.
We had a good connection, so it was free to work with each other.
There was a point in the competition, like this year, Kendi looked at me and she's like, I think we're gonna go to Florida, because we were up by like twenty-five points.
We're four-time repeat. I don't even know how to say that, I feel like Tom Brady a little bit.
We did well in the first round, even though we were, it was close, but I did think we had it in the wraps.
I was in disbelief, honestly, my leg was shaking, my whole body was shaking from just being nervous and, and like having to do it for my first time.
I was kinda nervous with them, but yeah, but yeah, I think they, they did really well.
I think this was a good opportunity for me to learn more about my heritage and myself.
I've been like surrounded by Black history my whole life, so I feel like this would be like a good competition for me, and it felt really good to win.
It's truly a great opportunity, I feel like, because it is my first year competing.
Because you learn a lot from it.
You see people who are professionals coming up to these students, and are more impressed by what they just accomplished, and I think that gives them a sense of pride in themselves and a way to say like, you know, I can accomplish more.
And as you saw on the video, our championship teams from Mars and Northwest will be headed to Nationals in Florida this summer to continue competing. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Maskel. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Logan. The financial statements for the period ended January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, those here in attendance and watching from home. First, I'd like to say I forgot how good-looking everybody was, because I haven't seen your faces, full faces, in two years. That includes you, Mr. Storey, I see you out there in the second row. Beginning with the two items on the agenda tonight, first, a consent agenda item to increase teacher pay for next-level learning. As it was last year, the summer's program will be an important part of our academic acceleration for identified students. Staff have already contacted the first group of students invited to participate in next-level learning. Increasing the pay rate for teachers is another step to recruit and support educators over the summer. As families accept or decline invitations to participate in next-level learning, we will continue communicating with families of newly identified students. I think if families have a question about identification, please connect with your school leader at your child's school. Speaking of next-level learning, a reminder for young people, our district is looking for high school students interested in exploring teaching as a profession. We're hiring paid student interns again this summer. Student interns will mentor and tutor elementary students in small groups guided by a certified teacher. Applicants must be at least sixteen years old and in good standing at school. I can say, young people, that if you will turn sixteen during that time, you can also apply. We had a couple of students last year who didn't get to do the whole term, but because they applied, turned sixteen and were ready to go with their paperwork, we were able to hire them. Credit verification and background checks will be conducted. Interns will support next-level learning in June and July. This is another long-term strategy to build a highly qualified educator pipeline and address staffing in the field of education. Learn more at W W W dot O P S dot org. Tonight, we will have a presentation from our Finance and Accountability Division seeking approval on updates to our plan for ESER funds. When we first presented our plan last fall, we anticipated the need for future adjustments. Many will remember that the federal funds have specific allowable uses. Thank you to our staff and families who provided feedback. Our district hosted an ESER engagement session on Thursday evening here at TAC, as well as took suggestions via email. At every step in the ESER planning process, our team has exceeded requirements and community engagement. It reflects our district's high standards and commitments to those we serve. Our Chief Financial Officer and Chief Strategy Officer will have more specifics to share later this evening. As you arrived in our board meeting this evening, you might have seen some of the latest photos of our bond program at work. If we can display these, those slides again, they're scrolling, everyone can see the magnificent spaces open, set to open this year for schoolchildren. Forestation Elementary hosted our most recent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting. Pine Elementary is proceeding very nicely and will be shown more in-depth later this month. Of course, we're expanding our partnership with the YMCA with an express location at Buena Vista High School, which is stunning atop the hill at Sixtieth and L Streets. Furniture has even started to arrive at some of our schools, including Westview High, with beautiful, light-filled spaces for teaching and learning. We thank the voters who made our bond programs possible and the teams making an impact at schools across our district. I should also note that we will take possession of several of the schools in April. Is that correct, Mr. Wakefield? There is so much to look forward to as we prepare for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. On April thirteenth, we are hosting a group of citizens from South Omaha to tour our three schools in South Omaha on a bus tour. Thank you to Ms. Cassidy and to Ms. Juarez for agreeing to be on that tour with those individuals. The month of March brings many recognitions, including National School Breakfast Week. Our Nutrition Services Team goes above and beyond to make sure students are fed and ready to learn. Last week brought Read Across America Day. I enjoyed seeing our schools celebrate, and Omaha Public Schools is participating in readers become leaders again this year in partnership with the N C double A and College World Series. March includes Music in Our Schools Month, School Social Worker Month, and I believe it's School Social Worker Week this week, so thank you to our school social workers, and of course, our Maintenance Worker Appreciation Day, which in my opinion is every day. We certainly appreciate our maintenance workers, especially on a day like today when they had to move snow. We highlight recognition days because it takes every person to make our system go. Congratulations are in order for our student athletes competing at state basketball, our medalists at the state swimming meet, the Central High Jazz Band, who was selected to perform at this past weekend's Nebraska State Band Masters Association Conference. They were remarkable. Thank you to Ms. Kristofferson for attending with me there in Lincoln on Friday evening. Lastly, there is snow in the forecast for Wednesday night and Thursday. Please make sure to monitor the snow as we anticipate snow on Wednesday evening and on Thursday. This, that concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Colleagues. Ms. Juarez.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank again the staff and principals. I still am going out in my district and meeting people. I went to the Learning Community Center in South Omaha. I went Wilson School and Gilder, and I'd like just to thank everyone for welcoming me. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Juarez. Any other colleagues? Okay, moving on to public comment. We have five speakers tonight who have submitted request to speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. Given the, sorry. If you're any of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify him or herself, including an address and the name of any organization that you may represent unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. The following individuals have requested that the Board waive the requirement that they state their name and address at the podium for security reasons, and those names are Michaela Kazer, John Thorndson, and Grace Vouris. At this time, I will accept a motion to waive those names requesting a waiver, and I'll first start with Michaela Kazer.
So we're gonna do one.
Is there a motion? Okay.
I'd move to waive the requirement.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Tielan and seconded by Mr. Head. Discussion.
Doctor.
Discussion. Mr. Snow.
Is it appropriate to, for us to know why they want their address waived?
Let me just check to make sure that I'm able to say that aloud.
I only ask for the public to know why they want.
So I am able to say that Ms. Kazer is requesting a waiver due to the fact that she is a minor.
Thank you.
I will be voting against this motion. This particular speaker has given her address in the past, over the course of the past year, and has not identified any change in circumstances that would require us to not have her give her address now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other points? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
No.
Erdnberger.
No.
Head.
Yes.
Holman.
No.
Juarez.
No.
Crackey.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Snow.
No.
Tielan.
Yes.
Three ayes.
Motion fails. The next individual is Mr. John Thorndson, and he is requesting a waiver due to some litigation and would not like to share his address publicly. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Point of origin.
I apologize. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Erdnberger and seconded by Ms. Juarez. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Tielan.
No.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries. And the final person tonight is Ms. Grace Vouris, who has indicated that she is a minor. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Head and seconded by Ms. Crackey. Any discussion?
Doctor.
Mr. Snow.
Does it, are they an OPS student?
Excuse me, yes, this is an OPS student.
Thank you.
I believe the policy says if they are an OPS student, they are not required to give their address, so I'm perfectly willing to vote in support of this motion, but I'm not sure it's necessary. So now what you gonna do?
Any other further discussion?
Was there a motion on the floor?
Not yet. Just make sure there's any other further discussion. Okay, is there a motion, please? And then with seconded by Ms. Crackey, any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tielan.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion carries. Let me get all these back in order, one moment, please. Okay, those individuals covered by the previous motion need not provide their address, and I'll remind you once you come to the podium. Please, in addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them for you. It is now six fifty P. M., and our first speaker of the night is Rebecca Atkins.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening. Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Superintendent Logan, and members of the Board, thank you for your time tonight and for your service to OPS. I am a proud OPS graduate myself from Omaha South High School and an OPS champion, so I really appreciate your work. I'm here tonight to announce a new program that I'm developing at U N O in the College of Business called the CBA.
I'm sorry, could you provide your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Five-six-one-three Oak Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-six. And do you need me to spell my name as well?
Yes.
Okay, it's Rebecca, R E B E C C A, Atkins, A T K I N S. Okay. I'm here tonight to announce a new program that I'm developing at U N O in the College of Business called the CBA Prep Academy. The CBA Prep Academy is a pre-college program that aims to provide the academic skills, exposure, and support necessary to all students to really help them succeed in college and the workplace thereafter. Again, this program is open to all students, but we're really hoping to make an intentional effort to include those students who may be first-generation from a low-income background and/or have an underrepresented identity. This summer, we will be hosting three week-long summer camps that are completely free to Prep Academy students. Each camp will have a specific business topic, but all of them will include things like college access, career exploration, personal finance, and a chance to interact with local business professionals. We really hope to realize our program mission through these summer camps. Currently, I am here to spread the word and really just connect with you all to make connections with different instructors in OPS or F B L A sponsors. I just want to, again, make sure that I'm really targeting the students who will benefit from our programming the most. So I did bring some business cards if anyone would like to have coffee or Zoom, and again, just chat, I want to get to know the folks in your districts so I can connect with your students and hopefully recruit them and get them into our summer camps. So, thank you.
You could kindly give those to Ms. Kristofferson, she's gonna raise her hand in the back. She's our chief academic officer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker for the evening is Michaela Kazer.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazer, M I C H A E L A K A Z O R, and my address is one-one-six-one-nine Grand Avenue, six-eight-one-six-four, and I am here today to speak about, to address the fact that OPS names equity as one of their core values, as seen on the wall at the back of this boardroom. I'm here today to inform parents what equity really is and why equity harms children instead of helping them. Before I say this, I want to let everyone know who I am. I'm a seventeen-year-old who is a God-fearing, Bible-loving, Holy Spirit-filled Christian who does not see people through the eyes of race. While I see color, I am no respecter of persons, and color doesn't matter to me. I attend an extremely diverse, here in, a very diverse church here in Omaha, and I worship beside people of color every single Sunday, and I do not care what color they are. I have a pastor at my church who has dark skin, and I consider him to be a second father to me. Some of my closest relationships are people with dark skin. I work at a mission where I serve people from all ends of the earth, and I pray and show the love of Jesus to every single one of them without even thinking about what color or where they're from. I let you know this so that you do not misinterpret me, misinterpret what I am saying, but that you hear what I am speaking is truth and righteousness. I pray, I pray according to what Jesus prayed in Matthew eleven fifteen, that he who has ears to hear, let him hear. The definitions of equality and equity may at first glance appear to say the same thing, but a closer look at these two words show that these words define two very different things. The Milken Institute of Public Health at George Washington University states definitions that describe equality and equity very accurately. Equality means that each individual group of people is given the same resources and opportunities. Equity allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. As the America First Policy Institute states, in short, equality refers to sameness in opportunities, as equity refers to sameness in outcome enforced by an outside entity, in this case, the government, regardless of individual choices. Equality gives each student the same opportunity to succeed. Equality gives students the same opportunities to receive instruction from a tutor. Equality gives students the same opportunity to go in before or after classes to receive extra help. Equality gives students the same opportunity to decide how their life will turn out. Equality gives students the same opportunity to decide how their life will turn out and how successful those studies will be. Equity places the responsibility out of a child's learning and the hands of someone other than the child and the parent. This means kids will receive extra time on assignments because the teacher does not want to fail them. This means that the student will not gain certain disciplines in order to be successful, such as completing work on time and studying for tests because the teacher doesn't want the student to fail. This hurts the child in the long run because in life there are deadlines and policies and procedures that an employee must follow to be successful. You're setting up kids, you're setting up kids so that they do not know how to work, and why would someone want to hire a kid who doesn't know how to get a job done? Students and parents, I pray that you hear this and await to see truth. We need more parents and students to come out to these meetings and stand for truth and righteousness. It's not difficult to come up here and speak truth because as Romans 8:31 says, "If God is for us, who can be against us?" God bless you.
Our next speaker for the night is John Thornderson.
Hello and good evening.
Good evening. Members of the board, anyone listening at home, and for all who are participating in OPS in some form, I thank you for your time. My name's John Thornderson. I believe you waived the requirement to disclose my address.
Could you please spell your first and last name, though?
J.O.H.N., last name, T.H.O.R.D.A.R.S.O.N. Now, I've had a lot of things that I've been wanting to say for several months now, but I have been prevented from entering these meetings or from participating. It's been a little over six months now that I have been prevented from coming in here, but there are plenty of other people who have also had similar issues participating. So, one of the reasons that I was not allowed in here has to do with the mask mandate that was just lifted, which, as passed by this very board, carves out multiple exceptions, which you have not honored. And for that, each meeting that I, as well as others who were not allowed to come in here because they were not supposed to wear a mask, that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska. Now, Nebraska revised statute, Chapter 84, Section 1414, lays out in its annotations that the proper remedy for this violation of the Open Meetings Act is the voiding of those meetings and the barring of any information obtained at those meetings from future consideration, which means it just didn't happen. Now, there's multiple lawsuits working their way through the courts right now involving myself and other parties whom I will not name. And though they are being consistently delayed, as they work their way through the courts, we will be persistent in ensuring that the law is followed and upheld, which means for myself and a handful of others, we will do everything we can to see that, as the law requires, the meetings for at least the last six months of this board, which has barred multiple people from entering unlawfully, will be voided. And that includes, among many other things, the questionable college, career, academies, and pathways, which I believe multiple years were spent collecting information about that. And it was proposed at a meeting in which people, members of the public, could not review the information or comment on the information. That, of course, is going to be voided. The board has been conducting legal meetings for some time, and anything that gets voided due to your disregard for the law will be voided because you chose to break the law. It's on you. Now, for the members of the public, if you don't like this, if this seems harsh, we ought to elect boardmen voided because they chose to do things without following the law. And so, I'm simply letting you know that basically everything that you've been doing for the last six months was for nothing because you chose to do it illegally. And I recommend you stop doing that. Thank you for letting me in tonight. It's a good start, but you've got more work to do if you want to actually be in accordance with the law. That's all I have to say.
Next, we have Mr. Store.
Good evening.
Good evening. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm glad to see the mask off tonight. Helps to understand your words as well as mine. But also, the process of visuals is part of the communication and learning through communication, understanding people. And it helps to be able to see your expressions. Even sometimes when I, as I understand, and a few months ago, there was a board member that turned his back on a young student from OPS who was at the podium. Not exactly a good procedure. But on to more important things. Mark Levin is a very astute lawyer and author, and he teaches Americanism. He has a book that should be on display in the public libraries and in the public schools. Since there are books on display, or if it's not being taught, that talk about critical race theory. People across this country and school boards across this country are finally waking up that people don't like it, that it is Marxist. If you must talk about it, take the R out of it and don't call it critical race theory. Call it critical theory and teach the children what critical thinking is. But when you're doing that, you must also teach them what our founding fathers knew. They were not illiterate. They were very intelligent and very precise in their wording. And we have a very precise constitution. I don't know, since my high school days, if they teach any of that anymore. They didn't teach it in depth. That's up to the individual to learn, once you get our interest going. However, it's hardly ever discussed. The school boards across the country are pulling out of the National School Board Association for some of those reasons. Marxism in America is in the public schools very heavily, and critical race theory is a Marxist theory. And I'm not guilty, never have been guilty, of racism. Do we teach children that there were slaves way back in Egypt and even before that? Probably on the Ark or the Covenant. No, it's art. You're probably somebody that had to work to do something for somebody else. There were indentured servants that came over on boats from England or other countries that were indentured for so many years before they had citizenship and a chance to own property. So it's nothing new. And we're not guilty still of slavery. And all of the terrible things that did happen, we will not dismiss that. But we're not still guilty, so you must not let people continue to accuse us of that. I did have a discussion with a county board member. Wanted to know what my interpretation of that was, and then he wanted me to read his book. Well, I have some books that he and you people should be teaching and reading. Excuse me. The Killing of England. How people formed colonies and eventually struggled against the tyranny of England to form a country that is a unique compound republic, not a democracy. They're precise words during a book like this.
One minute.
And the people that are trying to take our country down, you can read about them in magazines like this. "America Has No Helper." "The Agenda to Erase America." I speak against that. This is the Trumpet Magazine, and it talks about the possibility of these things being prophesized. That doesn't mean we shouldn't speak out about it. And I believe we are charged with speaking out against evil.
Thirty seconds.
Another monthly magazine out of their, their news organization. "The Changing World: The Corona Apocalypse." An awful lot of people are divided, severely divided, even families, on this coronavirus business. There are a lot of people being found with strange anomalies after they are dead tied to these vaccines that have been thrown upon.
Time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Next for tonight, we have Grace Voorhees.
Good evening. Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Grace Voorhees, G.R.A.C., last name, V.O.O.R.H.E.E.S. Dear Dr. Logan and the members of the school board, I'm here to give another perspective of a freshman who is at Burke, but I'm required to go to Westview for next year. I hope that this will give you more information about the freshman students' experiences and maybe help you consider making an exception to the no exceptions rule, as in that everyone in the Westview area has to go to that school. The past few months have been increasingly more stressful with trying to stay at Burke for next year. What I've been told ever since I'd heard about the new high school being built was that I would go to Burke my freshman year, and then I could decide whether I wanted to stay there or to go to Westview. Then last year, I learned that I was going to be enrolled to go to Westview, but I could try to stay at Burke if I really wanted to. I was okay with that since it was close to my house and I had a couple of friends going there. But I ended up falling in love with Burke. I've had so much fun this year, and in December, I realized I didn't want it to end. So I started the process of trying to stay at Burke. I filled out all my paperwork to opt out of Westview, and at that point, I was told a few different things. One person told me that I could stay at Burke if I wanted to, but the chances of being allowed to stay were very slim. Other people at the office told me that as long as I filled out the school choice form and chose Burke, I would be able to stay without an issue. Then things got even more complicated when we started the process of scheduling for next year and choosing pathway and everything, and I didn't even know where I was going to school. So I wasn't, like, really focusing on actually choosing my classes. I kept contacting my counselor, and a month ago, my choir teacher, Mr. Groth, and my dean, Ms. Uher, said that they would help me stay at Burke. I thought this meant that I would be definitely allowed to stay. A couple of weeks ago, though, I was finally informed that there was no possible way that I could stay at Burke, that I was absolutely required to go to Westview because of the area that I live, and that all this had been decided years ago, and the OPS schools knew that, but they clearly didn't because Burke told me I had school choice. I wish to stay at Burke for a few different reasons. There are academic benefits, like more AP classes and certain subjects that I wanted to take that won't be offered at Westview, like marine biology. Also, having the upperclassmen is a big thing in a normal high school experience because they are very helpful and just fun to be around. Something I've learned is that being with people older and more skilled than you makes you more skilled. Like, if you're playing a sport and you're around, sorry. Like, if you're playing a sport with people better than you, you'll get better. But the main thing is the music and theater program at Burke. I'm involved in the Chamber Orchestra and Burke Show Choir, and I love them so much. I know for a fact that deciding to do show choir at Burke has been one of the best things I've ever done. They both will be offered at Westview, I understand, but it wouldn't be at the same level it is at Burke. I know that can't be helped since it's just one of the difficulties with opening a new school. There are also lots of other things only Burke does because it's been set up that way for years. The orchestra program has had several fundraisers and opportunities to play for school events and in quartets outside of school. Burke Show Choir does tours to middle schools and places like the American Legion Club in the fall, and they even hosted its first show choir competition in January. These things would take years to be set up at Westview. Also, I just want to add that Burke Show Choir is one of, it is the best group that I've ever been a part of, and our last competition was on Saturday, and it was just so much fun, and I want to have, like, I want to keep doing it because it's the best group of people that I've ever been with. To conclude, I believe that high school is an important part of life, and I want my high school experience to be the best it can be. For me, the best it could be would be staying at Burke. I know there are lots of people who want to go to Westview, and they would excel there, and they're very excited to go there. Actually, I know of one person who wants to go to Westview but has to go to Burke. I understand that opening a new school is very hard, and of course, you need people to go there. But I think that there are plenty of people who want to go there, so it isn't necessary, in my view, to require certain people to go there if they don't want to. Even if this does not change your decision, I hope it will at the very least give you information for similar things in the future. Thank you.
Moving on now to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Still move.
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Head? It's been moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Head. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, thank you, President Holman. I am abstaining, once again, from item I3, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I4, Claim C for my work on the OPS Schools Foundation, and that is the topic of Claim C this evening.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Head, and Mrs. Cassidy will be abstaining from item I4, Claim Report C. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Nine i's. Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to action items, item J1A, approval of the report of the Legislative Committee, including recommended legislative positions. Mr. Head will be sharing with us tonight.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. So we've got a pretty quick legislative report tonight. Not a whole lot has happened since the last meeting. The only position that the committee is asking the board to take is to oppose AM 2087 to Bill 730. That's out of the Revenue Committee. LB 730 has essentially become the Christmas tree bill to come out of the committee. It's the committee's priority for essentially a whole bunch of tax changes this year. And there's really only one provision in AM 2087 that we oppose. That's the opportunity tax credits. So with that, I would move approval of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Juarez.
Yes.
Crackey. Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Nine i's.
Motion carries. Moving on now to item J1B, approval of the proposed amendment to the plan for expenditure of $280,644,904 allocated to the district by the Nebraska Department of Education from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, otherwise known as ESRS, II Fund and the ESRS III Fund, which was previously approved by the Board of Education on September 9, 2021. And tonight, we have both Mr. Roberts and Dr. Fullmore, maybe? Yes, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to address you this evening. As I mentioned last September and again in February this year, from time to time, we'll come to this board and ask for approval to amend our ESRS application. This is a normal process and occurs when our current plans or cost estimates require updating with the state. Generally speaking, there is three main reasons why we would come to you and want to amend our application. First, the district has new priorities or initiatives that we wish to pursue. Second, cost estimates contained in the prior application are no longer accurate. And third, we anticipate delivery challenges brought on by supply chain issues, labor availability, material shortages, and other issues that would not allow us to spend the money as planned. We strive to ensure that we're good stewards of the ESRS funds that we have been granted. As such, we will continuously reassess our ability to execute on all of these initiatives and reallocate funds when appropriate. In a minute, Dr. Fullmore will walk you through the 13 new initiatives that we are seeking approval for this evening. All 13 of these initiatives are new and were not included in our ESRS application last fall. As a reminder, we are limited in the use of these ESRS funds. With ESRS I, II, and III, a prescribed list of allowable uses was included in the legislation passed by Congress and signed by the president. We strongly believe all of our proposed initiatives clearly fit within these allowable uses and have already had preliminary conversations with the state about our plans. With that said, until our amendment is, our amended application is filed and then approved by the state, we will not be able to begin implementing these new initiatives. When we completed our initial application last fall, we had to estimate what each initiative would cost over the next three years. With the passage of time, we have been able to refine some of these estimates. In some cases, we have found that our estimates were on the high side. Our new initiatives are being funded in part by those excess dollars, as well as some cuts to Pillar III, which is our infrastructure initiatives. I will cover the financial pieces in a little bit more detail later. With that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Fullmore to review- With that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Fulmore to review the proposed new initiatives with you. Dr. Fulmore.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, and Dr. Logan. Tonight, we are delighted to share the proposed initiatives for our amended ESRS spending plan. Last summer, we developed a robust ESRS spending plan. Our engagement efforts far exceeded expectations, and without question, the voices of our stakeholders have been part of our process of building a plan that puts us on a path of successful recovery. The ESRS guidance from the Nebraska Department of Education allows for revisions to the ESRS spending plan and encourages school districts to regularly review and, as appropriate, revise this plan. With this in mind, we have reviewed our current ESRS spending plan and are proposing the following Having high-quality teachers in every classroom is a priority. The proposed initiatives support teacher specialty, licensure credentials, and professional certification. We also want to invest in the future of our district and address hard-to-staff and high-end demand areas, and these initiatives that you see here reflect those efforts. We are expanding opportunities for our students with increased access to dual enrollment. We are also prioritizing the needs of students who receive special education services and enhancing summer learning experiences by providing additional academic resources and extending the day for middle school. And as you can see here, it also includes one of the things that we normally do each summer, which is have our summer book fair that would allow our students to take home seven to 10 books each, and we are really excited about that as part of our summer The well-being of our students and staff will continue to be essential to the success of our school district. This pandemic has taught us that it takes all of us to make it through, and we will continue to support, to provide, to be a support for our student, staff, and families as we press forward. And what you see here are our efforts to promote the health and safety of our staff and to make sure that we address opportunities for, address food insecurity in our communities, which is integral to supporting the whole child learning experience and making sure that our families have what they need. So all of our initiatives expand the work that we are currently doing under our ESRS plan and allows us to do, to do more and, and to support our student, staff, and schools in more meaningful ways as we continue to assess our priorities and needs. And now, Mr. Roberts is going to review for you how we were able to make those financial adjustments within our plan.
Thank you, Dr. Fulmore. As Dr. Fulmore just noted, our amendment request includes a little over $36 million worth of new initiatives. A majority of these initiatives are in the Pillar One or Academics. This page that you're looking at currently shows the dollar and percentage changes for each of the four pillars. Academics, which is Pillar One, is increasing by nearly 24 million or 16%. Pillar Three, which is Infrastructure, is being reduced by the same amount, with those funds being reallocated to new academic initiatives. Pillars Two and Four, which are Student and Staff Well-being and Family and Community Initiatives, are only changing by 200,000. The next several sheets will break down the changes by pillar in our group by initiative categories. The first category in Pillar One is Learning Acceleration. The original budget for instructional materials was reduced by nearly $2 million due to an overestimation of costs in the original plan. Funds were added for Student Advanced Academics and Moving Special Education Forward, with a net increase in this category of $600,000. For Literacy Initiatives, there was a reallocation of funds to cover the cost of the summer book fair. Overall, there was a $1 million reduction in this category, but I must stress that all initiatives anticipated in the original application will still be completed as planned. Next Level Learning is being increased by $8.6 million. This is for additional curriculum and expanded full-day Next Level Learning for middle school students this summer. For Teacher Leadership, $3.2 million worth of costs were reallocated within this category and an additional $12.3 million for new initiatives was added. The category is showing a net increase of $15.5 million. Funds were added for several new initiatives related to building our new teacher pipeline and educational initiatives to provide further development of current staff. The new initiatives include the Teacher Academy, Teacher Advanced Academics, Student-Teacher Stipends, the Teacher Scholar Program, and Accelerated Teacher Learning. Pillar Two is for Student and Staff Well-being. This pillar is only changing by $200,000 or 2%. There are two new initiatives being proposed. The first is COVID-19 testing for symptomatic students and staff. This was a program that we started earlier this year and we plan on continuing. And a new employee wellness program for the remainder of those dollars. These activities are being funded principally with a reallocation of dollars within the Pillar Three is for Infrastructure Initiatives, and we are reducing our spending by nearly $24 million in this area. The reductions are principally for roof and window replacements and mechanical system upgrades. 100% of this money is being reallocated to Pillar One or Academic Initiatives. Pillar Three is the only area where the scope of activities are being scaled back or reduced from our original plans. Labor and materials availability, as well as current and anticipated supply chain issues are driving this change. Once we have determined that we are not able to complete an initiative due to external forces, we will quickly reallocate funds to ensure that we're able to spend the money made available to us before the money expires. And finally, Pillar Four, which is Family and Community Initiatives, is increasing by $200,000. We are partnering with the local food bank to provide monthly food distributions at three of our school sites. This ends our prepared remarks for this evening, and we would be happy to now answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you both for being here this evening. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. So you mentioned, Dr. Fulmore, at the top, engagement from the community, and that's obviously part of something that we did at the very beginning, a little bit more in-depth, and we're on a little bit more of a tightened timeline with these changes. Can you describe just the process of how we involved the community and how the changes were made?
So in terms of the level of engagement that we did early on, which was far exceeded expectation, that was part of the requirement for the initial plan development. The requirements are different when it comes to submitting revisions to the plan, and at least it asks that you post those proposed revisions to the website and allow for public comment that you take into consideration in the development of the plan. We did, however, offer three opportunities for community and stakeholders to be engaged. The first was a in-person meeting that they could attend if they wanted to on Thursday, March the 3rd. The other was that they could email us to esrfeedback.org and we did, OPS.org, and we did receive feedback from stakeholders via the email, and they could also sign up to speak to you all today and have public comment in front of you prior to you voting and making that decision.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. The extended of the middle school day, is that, can you give us what time middle school gets out right now and what time are you, what'll get out moving forward?
So this is not part of the current school year. During the summer, we typically have a full day for middle school. However, the dollars originally allocated for Next Level Learning did not allow us to extend the day past noon, and we want to ensure that we can provide a full day of instruction, so it creates an opportunity for us to shift dollars to support teacher salaries for a full learning day for middle school students.
So that goes in my next question. What was the reasoning behind it? I'm just curious.
For extending a day? Well, with consideration to the number of, to the learning interruptions that we had, we've had over the course of two years, we feel that it is appropriate in the best interest of our students that we are identifying as having the highest priority of learning needs, that they have a full day of learning. That is also, that also includes enrichment and acceleration activities, not just the traditional learning schedule.
I'm assuming we have like, a percentage of students we are trying to seek for that summer school.
Yes.
My next two questions is probably for Mr. Roberts for the changes. Is there potential, when's the deadline to make any more changes with these funds? And what's the deadline, this might go to the superintendent, what's the deadline for the district, you know?
Yeah, I would say there are no hard deadlines, other than the deadline when the ESRS two and three funds expire in September of '23 and September of '24. So we can and will repeatedly modify our amendment or come to the board for approval for the amendments. What we, what we have to do is be able to manage these initiatives and, and far enough out to be able to spend the money and incur those charges before the expiration of the funds. So as we realize that we have excess funds due to lower costs or that we're not able to execute, we will come back with additional amendment suggestions so that we can redeploy those dollars. Until those are redeployed and approved by the state within an application, we're not able to spend them, so we will have to constantly amend this.
So that, actually, so we can get all the way to the deadline, and let's say we still have a certain amount of dollars left over, but the deadline's already passed to use the funds, do we still get to use those funds? It goes back to the...
They will, they will expire on the expiration date, which means we have to have incurred the costs and dispersed funds within a nominal amount of time after expiration.
Makes sense.
And considering, if I could, considering the amount of time it takes to go out to RFP in some cases and board approval, you know, we're going to have to have final decisions made, you know, up to six to eight months before those expiration dates if we have hopes of spending the money.
And it could be a possible special board meeting if needed or something like that. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. Thank you, first of all, for the presentation. You lay this out very easy and logically. I think that I really, first of all, really appreciate the reductions, everything that you've laid out that is going to be reduced. It very much makes sense, especially the infrastructure due to shortages and shipping and things that we're not able to get. So first of all, just really appreciate how easy this flows. Just two quick questions. The pillar two, the Student, Staff, and Well-being, I think is a really important pillar for us, given, obviously, the year that we've, years, I should say, that we've all been under with mental health, mental wellness, mental health. I'm curious what types of initiatives are in there. I know you've got listed the COVID testing, but what else kind of encompasses, do you have any examples for that health and wellness? Someone?
Yes, currently, Ms. Utterback and, and Mr. Wakefield are working on looking at some employee health and wellness, physical health and wellness, potentially bringing to the board a contract with a health provider, a health and wellness provider that where staff members would be able to sign up and participate and improve their physical and mental health. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, because I don't want to mention a vendor, and we have, I was warned and not to mention a vendor, and so we're starting, we're working on that, starting to work on that now. Once we have something a bit more concrete, which should be in the next two weeks or so, we'll bring that first to board officers and then to you all, but the staff is working on that.
I think a to-be-determined answer is just fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
If that works. My second question has to do with the, the food distribution. Is that going to be pretty similar to what we already did as a district during COVID, during the pandemic, where we distributed food?
Identical. We have, we'll be working, we are working, the ESRS has really strict requirements about procurement, and so because we want to do some continuation kinds of things, so for example, almost all of the teacher preparation you saw was, is with one particular university. We have to have, the staff has worked on rationale to be, and those have been submitted to our council, Ms. Neely Sprash, and we will, we have a meeting scheduled with NDE to determine, because they have to approve if we don't, if we don't go out to bid, and some of these things, like I said, are, are continuation programs. Food Bank is one. The Teacher Scholars Program, which is an existing program at UNO that is current, oh, I think I just mentioned a vendor, at UNO, thank you, sorry, at UNO, I mean, well, this one is going to be, I, I feel comfortable mentioning it, but is a current program that's actually philanthropically funded. The philanthropist has pulled out of the program. We do have students that are continuing in the program, but in order to start the next cohort for the next few years, that's what the money is in there for. So we have some work to do to work with NDE. Now, well, I have had already preliminary conversations with our commissioner. Nothing seems untoward or out of the ordinary, but I mean, it's an extraordinary amount of funds, so that's kind of where, that's where we are with that. But the staff has submitted all of the rationales for those. Next step is to meet with the, first of all, is approval tonight, then to meet with our Commissioner of Education to make sure those things are approved, and then to bring the items back to the board for your board approval.
Great. Thank you so much. These are really important pieces, especially, I mean, just thinking about families, even though we are hopefully turning a corner with our pandemic. So many families are still struggling financially, and the recovery financially is just still ongoing for so many, so I appreciate both of these pillars for sure.
I would say also, one of the existing things was wellness for our young people. We didn't go back over all of the things that were already approved, but that is in there as well, which expands sports programming down to elementary school and some other kinds of supports for, for our young people as well. So we're just doing some, realizing what, what monies we actually will have to spend. We wanted to do some, it was, I think, prudent to do some reallocation at this moment because the two years will be up sooner than later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, and thank you guys both for the presentation. I really appreciate it, and I know we've gone through this in a small group meeting already. I guess I have, I have a couple of different questions for you and statements. First of all, I really like that, you know, most of the money that's being reallocated is going towards academic projects. I think we all understand that that's, you know, we owe a lot to our students. Our students have, have lost a lot over the last couple of years, and so helping them catch up and providing more opportunities is a huge, huge part of this, and I love seeing that more money is going there. And also reinvesting in our staff and helping our staff. I know a lot of them have been, been warned then, especially over this past year and a half, and so the, the staff wellness, you know, opportunities, things like that. I'm excited to see how that, how that works out. So I guess my question is, what's the, what's the timeline look like for spending this? Because I know we've got until '23, '24 to, to spend all this money, so is it, like just looking at one of the items here, how about the 15 and a half million for the Teacher Leadership Academies? Is that, you know, as soon as we approve this, is that all going to be spent essentially day one, or is that kind of a slow rollout and keeping the programs going over the next couple of years?
That's going to be one of our challenges in meeting with NDE for approval. The Teacher Scholars Program is the most tricky because that scholarships, 180 to 100, teachers over four, over their entire career, which is, from the time it would start in the fall, is seven years for, for the, for all the cohorts to go through. So we will have to be creative with NDE and understand how we're going to be able to do that. We also will have to work with the federal, with the folks at the U.S. Department of Education on figuring that out. In October, the, we received upgrade, renew, updated guidance on the kinds of things that we could spend the money on and things that the Secretary of Education was encouraging us to spend the money on in terms of teacher pipeline, and that's how we arrived here today. Many of those things were not delineated in the original spending guidelines as, as, as people realized some of their real needs and some... as people realized some of their real needs and some, some real need to do some, first of all, invest in our current teachers, but also do some, a lot of pipeline work. That is where, where some of them, we got, we've received a list of some ideas from around the country and, and, and emulated some of those, from some of those ideas from around the country.
Perfect, thank you.
If I could, just one additional point on that. Behind the scenes is reams of paper. There are these initiatives, but also sub-initiatives, and we've broken those down into budgets by fiscal year, so we could provide additional detail if you like, but we've got it spread out based on the needs of each of those initiatives.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. And then looking at the literacy initiatives and sending books home with the kiddos, love the idea. Just with the national conversation over schools, libraries, all that fun stuff, what books are we sending home, or is that still TBD?
We, actually, young people are able to self-select through Scholastic. We, Schol, oops, I used a vendor name, so sorry. That is an existing program that we have had for the last five years, where students self-select books through Scholastic. So similar to the book fair that you may have seen at your child, grandchild's school, it's the same kind of thing that, that young people will be able to, will young people be able to select.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Crackey?
I wanted to go back to the middle school and summer school, and it would essentially be the same amount of time. So can you clarify, what are the hours for middle school now, and how will that be the same as you wanted it to be for this summer? If I understood that I didn't understand for sure. Thank you.
All right, so for next level learning, the day would have ended as if they took a half day, had a half day of summer learning, and now it will extend to closer to 2:30 in the afternoon. So it gives them a second half of the learning day.
Okay.
And the time is not precise, but it gives them a second half.
Yeah, so they eat lunch and then they continue. Well, I thought they ate lunch and went home. So that was where I was confused. Thank you.
Yes, so they will continue into the second half of the day.
Because we know that they, they really need that, and I am so glad we have that building, so they all have that opportunity. I hope they take the opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Crackey, that suggestion came from staff too, for the expansion of the day, so.
Good for staff, thank you. They knew what we needed.
School-based staff, no offense to our fine folks here, but it came from school-based staff.
All right. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Roberts, you were talking about the extensive documents, but if somebody from the public wanted to look at that, would that be available for them? I was just...
Yeah, I think we've got the detail, or the summary information up on the website for the community to look at currently.
Perfect. I just want to make sure, so if someone wanted to look through it, they can see how we're spending those funds and how they're being adjusted. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Vice President Ergenberger?
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate following up on what everyone else has said, that you guys have stayed fluid on this, because I know there's a lot of moving pieces, and the easiest thing to do would say, we're done. We did what we did in September, and that's what we're going to do. So this is, this is, I know, a lot more work, but it's obviously going to have a lot more benefit. So thank you so much for staying with it on a regular basis. Want to follow up on one question that Ms. Cassidy had, and I think maybe you answered it, but I just want to make sure I understand. When we say that the mobile food program is, is that going to be a summer program then? It's not, we're not doing it, it's monthly in the summer, or is it monthly year-round, or?
It's in the, during the year, and we have, we expand the backpack program. If you came to the distribution, I think, I know we had many board members who came to the food distribution, where the tractor trailer comes, we have families that are contacted and they come through, and it's usually about 300 at each site, if that's correct, Ms. Utterback, and families come and pick up, it's typically enough food for a family of four for about five days.
Okay, thanks. I know I participated, but it was a summer evening, so I didn't know if it was, but we do it on a...
We started in, in March of 2020, we started with our first trucks, and we have been going ever since. It also includes money to pay staff. We originally all did it all by volunteer, but we also have money to pay staff to include, we need security personnel and so on and so forth.
Is it too late for me to submit an invoice if I volunteered?
You could certainly submit one, and we're going to put that one in file 13.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, just add it to the, to my regular salary payment for being on the board. If we could go back to that first pair, the first slide that talked about academics, just a couple of quick questions. On one of, the one that had, I just got a password, so I've just been able to log on two seconds ago, so let me make sure. The one that's the...
With the programs on there?
The first slide about teacher advanced academics. I noticed that on the accelerating teacher learning, we've identified that we could do that with up to 1,000 teachers. Do we, are the other ones pretty open-ended, or what are the, what are the numbers that we see for those other three items on that slide?
I'll speak to the first one about the graduate program. We actually did some extensive work on about approximate number in order to get staff to the point to be highly qualified to teach dual enrollment courses, and there would be approximately about 245 staff that we would be targeting to help support them in getting them to be highly qualified in order to teach advanced academic courses. And then the accelerated teacher learning piece for up to 1,000 teachers, it's really taking a percentage of elementary, middle school and high school and providing that opportunity across a K-12 experience, or pre-K-12 experience.
Okay, great, and I guess I hadn't understood what that first one was. I, I've been out of town, so I know that you all had chances to ask these questions, so I apologize if I'm following up on things other people already asked. So that, that first one really is designed to make our, our dual enrollment program across the district as vigorous as possible.
Providing as many opportunities as we can for students, that it's not just in specific schools, that we can really meet the need across all nine of our high schools.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you. Student-teacher stipend, we already did that, and obviously we were the first out of the gate, but not the last, as other districts figured out that. What a great idea that was, so thank you for putting that in there. The last one was the Teacher Scholar Program, just so I understand what the difference is between some of these, that's the one you were just talking about, where there's a cohort, and those are high schoolers coming into taking, ending up with education degrees, basically?
Yes, Ms. Ergenberger, the, the goal is 20, maybe 25, high school students from OPS who would travel as a cohort through the program to become teachers for our district.
And the for our district part was my, the rest of my question on that, how do we, how do we make sure they are for our district?
We're still exploring that option. We're looking at forgivable loans perhaps, or other forms of service to the district. Our district hires many employees, not just teachers, and so we need employees of all types. So if they're anything like my kids, they changed their degrees three or four times, and we'll expect that.
As did mine, yes. No, no, I understand that, mine did too. And I, I understand that the larger pool of teachers there are out there, whether they commit to us or not is always a good thing, but nonetheless, if we're spending our $6.35 million to do it, I'd like to see those teachers back up, back in our buildings. So I just was wondering, but obviously you guys are going down that path already. Thank you so much, this is super exciting, and I'm, thank you again, like I said, for staying flexible and ahead of what the needs are, and make sure that we spend every last dollar. Thank you.
I will say again that that number is a little high, that would be the maximum amount that we would spend on the Teacher Scholar Program, and the goal is to have them, once this, we have approval tonight, we have a lot of work to do on these programs. There's a lot of work to do with our universities to go from here to when we bring these back for board contract approval, so, but we need to start here, so.
Ms. Crackey?
I, I think that when they're getting paid and doing the summer work, the students, aren't we asking them to commit to staying with the district as we're paying them? Is there some clause in there or any, at all?
For this Teacher Scholar Program, once it's completely done, they would be, Mr. Wakefield is going to spearhead that, likely looking at forgivable loans for those, for those folks, but there, there is a expectation that they would sign a contract saying that they are going to come back and, and work for the district.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, team, so much for being here tonight, but then also just for your thorough and comprehensive collaboration with one another in understanding the needs that needed to be made and then determining what those specific amendments needed to be in order to get this plan approved and then resubmitted to the state. So thank you all very much. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the plan for the expenditure of $280,644,904 allocated to the district by the Nebraska Department of Education from the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief ESRS II Fund and the ESRS III Fund, which was previously approved by the Board of Education on September 9th, 2021.
So moved, Dr. Holman?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Snow, and seconded by Mr. Head.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Ergenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion passes, thank you all very much for approving that, it's definitely needed. Okay, moving on now to information items. Item J to A, Budget and Audit Committee Update. The Budget and Audit Committee met on March 2nd. Board members, Mr. Snow, Mr. Head, and Mr. Tealyn and myself were in attendance, along with District Representatives Dr. Logan, Mr. Ray, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Ryan, and Ms. Rykoski. Some of the things that we discussed were the 2020, 2021 internal control deficiencies. Management gave the committee an update on the two control deficiencies cited in last year's audit and remediation efforts, which are underway. Also discussed Series 2022 General Obligation Bonds. Management is preparing for the fourth and final tranche of the 2018 bond issue, the par value of approximately $35 million, and an anticipated interest rate of between 2.4% and 2.75%. And then management will come to the board seeking approval on March 21st to hold rating agency calls on the 22nd and 23rd, and then go back to market on March 31st. Settlement of the proceeds are anticipated to occur on April the 20th. 2021, 2022 year-to-date results and full year reforecast. Year-to-date financial results show a $22.1 million of estimated budget favorability. Most of the savings is from salaries and benefits and transportation. The full year reforecast anticipates $30 million of favorability against budget, and management presented a plan for use of those funds. The 2022, 23 budget upcoming activities, budget activities are well underway, the process started back in December, and State Eight was recently recertified for the 2022, 23 year by mid-April. Preliminary property valuation data will be available from both Douglas and Sarpy Counties. We have several upcoming key dates, but I will just share that on June 30th, the preliminary first round budgets will be available for review. Moving on to Olster's Audit for the calendar year 2021. Audit responsibilities shifted from Sim Johnson to the Auditor of Public Accounts, also known as APA, as a result of LB 147 last year. Legislation changed the audit period from OPS's fiscal year to now calendar year, and auditors have began to fill work, just as of last week. And our ESRS Update, management shared that $2.3 million of ESRS II and III monies have been spent and reimbursement requests submitted to the state, and then also a list of proposed new initiatives was, were presented and discussed. And then the 2021, 22 Excess Cash Reserve Projects, they reviewed progress on the additional projects included in this year's budget that utilize excess cash reserves from the prior year. $4.2 million spent year-to-date versus a budget of $40.9 million, and then there are no major concerns about spending progress, as the budget is for two major items, curriculum adoptions and supplies and materials for the two new, for the new schools, excuse me. And then activities in these two areas are well underway, and management feels that the money will be spent by year's end. If you have any specific questions, I know I threw out a lot of numbers and a lot of detail, but if you have any specific questions, I will say, don't hesitate to contact me, but I will send you to Mr. Roberts first, and you can come to me maybe about third on the list if you need to. That is all I have for the Budget and Audit Committee Report. Now moving on to Item J2B, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and Mr. Head will be speaking again tonight, thank you.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, and shout out, thank you to Mr. Wakefield for assuming that I would forget my notes and sharing his with me. So on Wednesday, the 23rd, I had the opportunity to represent the board at the Citizens Bond Oversight Meeting at Forest Station Elementary, and that school is looking absolutely phenomenal. I, I can't wait for students to, to be able to go into the facility next year, and I know the, the principals and the staff are extremely excited as well. Principal Vargas from Pine Elementary was there with us, as well as Principal Burkhardt from Forest Station. I know Principal Burk, sorry, Burkhardt mentioned that she's had numerous families from the area stopping by the school and coming up and knocking on the door and asking when they can come in and see it, and they're, they're, they're getting there, so hopefully pretty soon. But milestones to note from the bond, everything is on time and within budget, as of right now, there's no safety issues to, to report. Economic inclusion, so the small and emerging business commitments thus far are $39.6 million. $30.6 has been spent out of, out of those commitments so far. And then the, the piece that I actually really like the most is the student engagement, and so that is, you know, engaging students from the, you know, high school, middle school, other levels in, in the bond program, the bond work that's going on, so bringing the kids to the, to the schools to help with, you know, with the construction or whatever else is going on. So there's been 3,450 students so far involved in various bond projects. Obviously with, with COVID, that was, that was fairly limited early on in the bond, so that, most of that's been from, I'd say, the last few months here. So that is extremely exciting. Upcoming milestones at Buena Vista and Westview, they're going to be starting work on the athletic packages coming up soon here, installing furniture, fixtures and equipment at all the new schools, so Buena Vista, Westview, Forest Station and Pine, and they'll also be installing playgrounds, weather-dependent, at Forest Station, Highland and Pine in the near future. So that's all I have, thank you.
Very exciting news. Thank you so much, Mr. Head, for attending and sharing the information. Moving on now to Item J2C, Student Assignment Plan. Ms. Cassidy?
Okay, thank you, President Holman. All right, well, I too have to give a shout out for condensed notes, otherwise we'd be here for another hour probably with how much we cover. The Student Assignment Plan Committee met actually today, we met this afternoon, and I want to welcome Ms. Juarez to our committee. She attended her first committee today, hopefully we didn't scare her off too much with our vast amount of data. We met with committee members, and they went over three specific areas today. As you all know, we've been working very, very hard on all of our student assignment plan issues for several, several months, but we're winding down now to some concrete details to be able to provide to the schools very soon. First, we went over the elementary school changes and dual language. We then talked about specifically ninth grade selection in the two new high schools and 10th grade at Buena Vista and Westview, so kind of those three areas. Try to summarize them for you here. For elementary, we discussed obviously all the new schools that are going to be impacted, specifically the dual language schools. Obviously, there'll be school, there'll be students from dual language at some schools that will now be in the attendance area of schools that do not have dual language, so that was, that's addressed. All families will be notified of their school placement for 2023, starting this week, notifications are going to go out. There are 225 dual language students that were slated to move to Forest Station, Pine and Bancroft from the existing dual language schools of Gomez, Castalar and Spring Lake. So these families were provided an opportunity to stay in dual language. If you remember, we... If you remember, we talked about the letter of intent several months back. We started with that process, of course. Those families that returned the letter of intent indicated that they wanted to stay in dual language. They were able to continue their enrollment in dual-language program for the 22-23 school year. They worked with these families on that tradition, or excuse me, transfer request process. So those families, I think I had numbers for that. But basically, 75 returned from Gomez, returned, and all 75 will be able to stay at Gomez. And then Castalar, 22 are placed at Liberty. And like I said, there was 100 families in dual that were placed total. So basically, those families have been worked with through that transfer request process and it's working out very well. All populations that were projected are actually coming in pretty much as, just as the staff has predicted and projected, so that's a good sign. For the high school ninth grade, 81% of all incoming ninth grade students completed a selection form. Breaking that down then, 47% of students selected a non-neighborhood school. So, over... Pardon?
Could you start again?
Yes, for the ninth grade? Okay, so 81% of all incoming ninth grade students completed a selection form, okay? Then 47% of those students selected a non-neighborhood school. Forty-seven, forty-seven. So overall, 67% of students requesting a non-neighborhood school for first choice at ninth grade were approved, okay? So if we include students who did not submit a selection form and, and they're choosing their neighborhood school as their first choice, 85% of those students did get their first choice, if that makes sense. I know it's kind of, you have to kind of think about it. Overall, though, this is kind of your big one, 96% of all students got one of their three, three choices. Because obviously, when they're selecting, they're picking first, second, and third choice. So 96% of those students got one of their three choices, okay? Whether it be a non-neighborhood or a neighborhood school. And of course, you all remember the criteria, it's very logical, it's very equitable. Starts with neighborhood students first, of course, siblings second, and so on. So it's, that process has been in place the entire time. Okay, then we move on to the 10th grade, specifically at Buena Vista and Westview. We previously communicated with our current ninth grade students and families that live in the new attendance areas of Westview and Buena Vista. That would be moving from their current neighborhood school to the new neighborhood school for 10th grade. So this is just for 10th grade, okay? We previously communicated with them. However, at that time, we did not move students in the new attendance areas who were attending a non-neighborhood school already, okay? So several of those types of families requested placement at their new neighborhood school. So for instance, you have those students that are, they're attending non-neighborhood schools, but now they're going to be, they're, they're actually going to be in the district boundaries for either Buena Vista or Westview, okay? 100 students, that affected 100 students in the Westview area and about 150 in the Buena Vista area, okay? So this week, as well, on March 7th, they're going to start sending communication to those families so we can offer the opportunity for them to change their placement to the new neighborhood school for 10th grade. They'll be sent out in a form of an email and it'll have a form attached that families can fill out and send back with their, their choice, if you will. Make sense? Well, they, they will have to fill out that form.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, there's... Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Make sense? I know it's a lot, it's a lot of data, but we tried to break it down into ninth grade, 10th grade, and just talk about those elementary students, specifically dual language.
Question.
It's a lot of data, I know.
So for ninth grade, the students that are choosing non-neighborhood schools, I'm sure you guys looked at busing and stuff, like what does that look like? Adding the two new schools.
I get it.
I wouldn't say that, at least for me, my hope would be most of the kids would choose their neighborhood high school. And then maybe 47% are choosing their non...
Right, 47. So here's your question, we're just about busing?
About busing. Just the fact that I thought we wouldn't be busing as much because they'll be going to their neighborhood high school. Does that make sense?
Well, the, the criteria still for busing remains the same, so, I mean, if that student, you know, there's that, the tool that we showed a while back, yep, that, that still remains the same. It's, the, the factors for busing still are consistent across the board.
The cost wouldn't change at all, just with that. Okay.
Any other questions at this point? And if I, if you have a lot of really in-depth ones, I will be like Dr. Holman and I'll defer you back to Casey Hughes, who is the brain behind all of this, and Dr. McFarland, of course. But we try to condense it, of course, into just kind of those three specific areas so we don't overwhelm you for hours and hours here tonight.
I have a couple quick questions.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Excuse me. First of all, thank you so much for, I was, the follow-up on the dual language at the elementary level. One of my schools is a dual-language school. I know that was a really big issue. So the fact that people know what they can do.
Yes.
If they want to continue is fantastic.
They did a really good job with the dual-language piece. That's really excellent. So...
I was pleasantly surprised, as you could probably tell from my face, that so many, such a large percentage, that's almost half, right? 47 is almost half, right, right? Selected non-neighborhood schools because I feel like that is a testimony to what we were trying to accomplish by having our programs scattered throughout the district so that students really are following the programs more than has been the case in the past, based on the numbers I thought I understood. So that's very exciting. I'm, without meaning to dance on the head of a pin or stir any pots, 4% of the kids did not get one of their number one, two, or three choices. How does that even happen? Did they just pick schools that were totally full or what, who? Sorry, I don't want to make trouble, but I don't understand how that would happen.
I'm going to let Dr. Logan answer that.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Cassidy. Appreciate that. I don't know, so I'll have to find out. So if I'm, so, right, I don't...
Well, I, I know that the, it's a very big process. I mean, they, they are very thoughtful in how they, and, and... I, I don't really have an answer though exactly how it does come to that, but, I mean, I think 96% of overall students getting at least their top three is, you know, showing that the process is working. We're trying to keep it as fair and consistent for everyone and not bend rules for one school, one area. You know, that's main, that's the main thing that I think this committee and, and district staff has tried to do is keep everything consistent and very fair with equity always at the forefront. You know, we want to make sure that our students and our staff know that we're treating every school fairly, every school.
Great answer, and you're right, the 96% is the key number.
Well, I would, I want to say, first of all, Mr. Ray reminded me, because that is his wheelhouse, that the reason that we don't, first of all, I would never expect us to get to 100, so... But even just for mobility's sake, it would be difficult to get to 100, but it's capacity is the issue.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, too. Total population, I remember, they mentioned in our meeting that they had to be, take that into consideration, the total population of the school, not just those particular grades. So I think that that's what had an impact at the end.
Correct. I mean, right, we are, bottom line, we are fully staffed, these schools are ready to open. We, this is why we built them, you know, we want our students to be there and we're, we're making sure that the boundaries that we all voted on months and months ago are in place and they're in place for a reason. You know, we, we are here to fill these schools, so...
And the fact that we only have 4% that didn't get into wherever they thought they wanted means we've pretty evenly spread out.
Right.
That all of the schools are at about where they should be at. So that's fantastic.
Plus, though, that factor that was mentioned about those students that are going to get the email, who, you know, brought it to our attention, that even though they're going to another school now, they're excited about coming to Buena Vista. So that, you know, we want to give them the opportunity to definitely go to their home school now.
And a lot of those...
Which is exciting.
It's a good point. A lot of those families, Dr. McFarland let us know that a lot of those families have reached out to us and said, hey, we're at such-and-such school now, but aren't we in Buena Vista's? You know, so they've been reaching out to us and that wasn't an overlooked area, but it was a, an area that we were waiting on after other parts came into play and now we're finally, you know, it's, it's time to focus on those students that are currently at a different school, but do reside in our two high schools, new territories for our two high schools. So very exciting stuff, very exciting. And this group has done tremendous, district staff, I can't commend them enough. Dr. McFarland, Casey Hughes, they've done a great job. Scott Schmetbon, Schmetbonny, they've done a great job, so...
Thank you for the report, Ms. Cassidy. Appreciate it. Moving on now to receipt of reports. We have three ports.
Dr. Holman? Sorry, I just had one question.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you Chair Cassidy for your, for your leadership on the committee. I really appreciate it. It's probably one of the most interesting and definitely my favorite committee that I get to, get to sit on. So I, I guess one, one thing real quick, going back to that 4%, I, I'd love to see the breakdown there, too, because I think it's, you know, even though it's only 4%, it's still kids that aren't necessarily getting the, getting the option that they want. So I'd, I'd appreciate the opportunity to see the data of, you know, kind of where those kids are and why they weren't, why, why they weren't able to get their, get their school choice.
If Mr. Hughes is listening, we've got a request.
For the next, for the next committee meeting, we'll give you just a break. Not, not who the individual children are, of course, but just a, a breakdown of where, where they ended up. Because that always provides, illuminates some things.
Perfect.
Sounds great.
Also, I know we had a student here tonight who's in, I, I guess, a situation kind of like the, the 4%. I mean, I guess she's going into, she'll be a sophomore, not, not a freshman, but, you know, didn't necessarily get, get her, her school choice. And so I, I look at that situation kind of like what we did with the dual language where we gave those kids a, an option to stay in the program that they wanted to be in. So I would just hope that we could find some sort of a amicable situation going forward on that as well, so.
Well, while we always want to be amicable, there's a difference. And the difference is that dual language is provided at one school for high school and it's provided at six schools for elementary school. There is continuity of, of programming. I don't want to speak, you know, about the specific student. She certainly was heartfelt and courageous for coming up here, to coming to speak with us this evening. But there is, there, there are, there are particular differences. We get, we have received many requests for athletics. We have received many requests for all kinds of things. Some have come, as was indicated in the testimony today, directly from staff. And we, we have had pretty definitive understandings from our central office in terms of where, where students would be placed. And we would just ask all staff to refer families there because it is difficult when, everybody who works at a school is a school official and it is difficult when, when, when families hear mixed messages. And I, and it, I can't say anything else, but it's, it's difficult.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Ms. Erdnberger had mentioned the, the 47% and kind of how that compares to what we were doing before. And I guess I was under the impression that it might not be that different. So if we could also, I don't know that you've got this number, but if we could get the numbers maybe for, even just to get it to us directly, about the difference between neighborhoods, who, how many students were choosing neighborhood schools before versus now?
Oh, okay, I actually sort of know that number, but I'm going to...
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
If I may, real quick.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I couldn't sit any longer. 4% is amazing, by the way. And there's, there, yes, there is, and, and you keep in mind that sometimes when those forms are filled out, people will only select one school three times. They may not fill out three options. So there's multiple factors why it's not 100% and 100% would be fantastic. But I'm getting a lot of texts from people that want to, there's a great team that works on this process of placing kids and 4% is absolutely amazing, placing kids either first choice, second choice, or third choice. And you're correct, that's about the same percentage consistently through the years, Mr. Tealyn.
Mr. Ray, if you've got the names of the people that are texting you that I need to send and I'm, an apology to, I'm more than happy to do that.
It's, it's the usual group you apologize to, so...
The usual suspects, okay. Thank you.
And I think you might need to like offer gift cards or something at this point.
Okay, anyone else? Mrs. Cassidy, we definitely appreciate you and your leadership for being, serving on the Student Assignment Plan Committee for the past several years.
It's been a great committee.
Absolutely.
As Mr. Head said, it's very, very interesting and definitely something that affects all of us, so...
And Ms. Juarez, you will love it, and I'm sad that I'm not on it anymore, but it's fantastic.
Yes, thank you. I, I can tell I'm going to appreciate it.
All right, moving on, going once, twice, I'm moving on to receipt of reports. We have three receipt of reports on the agenda this evening. Item K1, Head Start Community Assessment 2021-2022 Update. Item K2, Head Start Monthly Board Report for February 2022. And Item K3, Second Quarter Board Conference Expenses 2021 to 2022. And Vice President Erdnberger, closed session, please.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Okay, I have a motion to go into closed session by Vice President Erdnberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:13 PM. Thank you all for joining tonight and have a good evening.